anniversary of the manhunt. The LA Police Commission has announced its findings on two of the officer-involved shootings.
The standard is the reasonable officer standard. Would a reasonable officer with similar training and experience have perceived a deadly threat that required a response?
Commission members found LAPD officers did use a reasonable response when they fired on Dorner in Corona, where they were guarding the home of one of his potential targets. But they found officers violated use of deadly force policies when they fired on two innocent women delivering newspapers whose pickup was similar to Dorner's.
A newspaper had been thrown out of the vehicle, what turned out to be a newspaper had been thrown out of the vehicle, and one of the officers mistook the sound of it hitting the pavement for a gunshot.
LAPD officers fired 100 bullets injuring both women. Now those officers face discipline, which could include extensive retraining or termination. Chief Beck says the tragedy taught him a big lesson.
The real lesson learned to me is that it is so important in this society because of the trust that we place in police officers that we pick the right people. In this instance, we terminated an individual from the Los Angeles Police Department during his probationary period.
That individual fired from the LAPD, of course, was Chris Dorner himself. Officials say he shot himself in a dramatic firefight with law enforcement officials at a cabin in Big Bear. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week. The women in that officer-involved shooting have both since settled with the city for $4.2 million. The family of an elderly man killed inside his own home joins LA City and police officials in offering a reward to help find the person who killed their loved one. Rasha Goel has more.
The Los Angeles Police Department continues to hunt for clues in the murder of 80-year-old Harvey Cohen, an investment banker who was fatally shot in his Encino home last September.
We're here to announce a reward of $50,000 for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the person or persons responsible for the murder of Harvey Cohen.
The Cohen family has also added an additional $25,000 towards the reward.
Someone came into our home and murdered my 80-year-old defenseless husband. What kind of person would do such a thing? That person is still in our community.
Investigators say Cohen was shot inside his house in the early morning hours, not long after a family gathering at the home. He suffered a gunshot wound to his stomach and later died in the hospital. His wife was at home during the shooting.
This is a difficult case, and we want to put things together, but we're pleading with the public to come forward with any information that they might have.
According to the LAPD, a bullet casing was recovered from the scene, but no murder weapon was found. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
If you have any information, call Detective Carrillo or Detective King at 213-486-6890. You can also leave an anonymous tip by calling Crime Stoppers at 1-800-222-8477. Our next few stories are about sustainability. First, a recent gathering brought together business and local leaders to discuss ideas on increasing sustainability. As Anita Bennett reports, the International Verde Exchange Conference was held in LA because of the city's role as a leader in clean technology. From looking at ways to conserve water and energy to getting a close-up of the latest electric cars, it was all on the agenda at the annual Verde Exchange Conference in downtown Los Angeles.
It's a multi-platform, horizontal kind of conference where people in energy, and water, and transport, and finance get together and discuss across the silos how we can get to goal here.
The goal was for international and business leaders to discuss adopting new technologies and policies that will lead to less polluted and greener communities. Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti served as keynote speaker.
Already, Los Angeles is the center of green jobs in America and one of the centers of green jobs in the world because of the good public policy and the great companies that are here and because of gatherings like this here today.
Since becoming mayor last July, Garcetti said he's made increasing sustainability a top priority.
It was my desire to make sure that we took environment and sustainability away from being an issue area and instead turned it into a universal value that pervades all of our operations.
LA's role as a global leader in green business is one of the big reasons the international gathering is held here each year. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. This is the seventh year that the Verde Exchange Conference has been held in LA. Another conference, the first of its kind in LA, also looks at green energy and ways to turn green energy into gold, especially when it comes to solar power. Anna Marcos reports. It's an effort to keep the solar business a hot commodity. This conference addressed the issue of building and growing the solar industry with alternative financing at a time when government solar subsidies are shrinking or disappearing.
We have abundant sunlight. We have hundreds of miles of rooftops, and I want the city of Los Angeles to generate its own power and leave fossil fuels behind.
We've got kind of a real screwy system here in the U.S. where Congress, on the one hand, has said that, you know, we want to have these investment tax credits, production tax credits, things like that, and yet we have an incredibly complicated set of hoops that you have to jump through.
Top solar experts talked about new financing ideas such as PACE financing, which uses equity in a building to finance a solar project. Even businesses which lease can go into partnership with the property owner.
My recommendation is, you know, work closely with your property owner instead of just maybe offering them a rooftop lease at 10% of revenue or 12% of revenue. You know, maybe there's a way to include them in the partnership where they can actually be, help you guys secure the capital.
New California laws such as Title 24, which will require all new buildings to have solar-ready roofs, and AB 1103, which requires large commercial businesses to disclose their energy efficiency and financial deals, could mean a renaissance for solar demand.
This disclosure compare is benchmarking, just like what we do. Energy Star Benchmarking produces a rating of 0 to 100, and that rating now is going to become, I believe, a factor in attracting clients and tenants, and I think it will increase the market price.
Could you talk a little bit about ways to lower the cost of tax equity?
The talk of tax equity, solar feed-in tariff programs, and PACE financing may have been hard to follow at times, but one thing everyone understood was that green energy can save green money and even help make it when it's financed right. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week. Councilmember Paul Coretts, who helped moderate the discussion, has been at the forefront of several green city council initiatives, such as the city's new ban on plastic bags and a plan to make the city completely free of fossil fuels by the year 2025. And on a more personal level, some local residents are learning their own lessons of sustainability as gardens are planted for them to access and maintain at the housing project where they live. The sprinklers are in working order at the Avalon Gardens Housing Project in South LA. And now, true to its name, new edible gardens recently constructed by the nonprofit organization in Rich, LA are ready for planting at Avalon Gardens.
We built these edible garden beds, put in sprinklers, we're going to put in a potting bench, and there's 18 beds here, and the idea is for 18 residents in this estate to use it to plant edibles, organic, obviously, and for them to start enjoying some of the wonderful Whole Foods that a lot of the rest of the city enjoy.
Due to the limited number of garden beds versus the number of interested residents, a raffle was held to determine the first 18 to take ownership of the gardens.
I'm really happy about this garden, that they opened it up. I'm going to plant a lot of fruits, being healthy. It can be near to my house. I don't have to be running to the market. I can be cooking and come and check my garden.
This is the first time Enrich LA, which builds school gardens, has worked with the Los Angeles Housing Authority to build gardens in the community.
The idea here is to start small. These are 18 eight-foot diameter beds, and if this is a success, then there's no reason why we can't expand this garden. We have plenty of space in this estate.
Enrich LA volunteers and residents planted lettuce, kale, and strawberries, as well as eight fruit trees. Councilman Curran Price, who represents the district which encompasses Avalon Gardens, was on hand to lend a hand.
We're working hard, getting the alleys cleaned, getting streets cleaned up, and creating gardens is a very natural way for citizens to get involved, to help improve the community.
Weekly workshops will be held for the kids of Avalon Gardens to teach them about gardening and healthy eating, a community effort that's rooted in raising a green and healthy-minded next generation. Boston Consulting Group in LA funded the project while Enrich LA did the heavy lifting. How often do you get to eat for free at a restaurant? That's just what hundreds of community members got to do as they helped celebrate the grand reopening of the La Brea Bakery. Anna Marcos attended the party.
So let's hear it for bread!
The La Brea Bakery got in a one-two punch. This was both a 25th birthday party and a housewarming party, as the café celebrated its move to a new location on La Brea. And yes, bread here took center stage.
When I first introduced this, what I call sort of a European style of bread, meaning a hearty loaf cooked on a deck oven, right? Not a squishy square loaf that's in a cellophane bag. It was new to a lot of people.
But now, the La Brea Bakery, its breads, its pastries, pizzas, and focaccias and sandwiches have become a time-honored tradition in this corner of the La Brea corridor.
Now you have the La Brea Bakery here again on this corner. They used to be down the street. They've become a dynamic light. People want to be, they'll walk on the shops, look at the art. It's very special, so...
It encourages business.
Well, it encourages the neighborhood. Neighborhood encourages business.
Because of your worth, you're forcing other restaurants in the city to step up their game.
And what's a party without free food? To celebrate, the restaurant is giving away 600 pizzas, 400 pastries, and 200 sandwiches.
Oh, I love it! It's like trick-or-treat for adults. It's so much fun to be here, and the food's not fattening because it's all free.
It's very much like these great restaurants in San Francisco that we're bringing here to LA, and I'll bet you anything, in the next many years, you'll see many, many more.
For many customers, it's been a 25-year tradition. For others, it has now become a new one, the place to get your daily bread. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week. The La Brea Bakery is located at 468 South La Brea, about a block down the street from its former location. Thousands of new life-saving trauma kits donated to the LAPD. America's second hottest neighborhood gets more pedestrian-friendly improvements, and a park in South Los Angeles receives an award for being environmental. These stories and more in City Beat. The Board of Police Commissioners has voted to receive 8,000 trauma kits donated by the Los Angeles Police Foundation, an independent nonprofit that provides resources and support to the LAPD. The kits, which were previewed for the first time at a recent commission meeting, include updated materials to replace ones used in kits created in 1998.
Within the budget, we would have never been able to get this in a timely fashion where it can save a life, and this will make all the difference.
A major improvement is the inclusion of advanced tourniquets, which saved countless lives in the aftermath of the Boston Marathon bombing. Eagle Rock was named America's second hottest neighborhood by the real estate brokerage firm Redfin. To help maintain the neighborhood's small-town feel and to help improve pedestrian safety along Colorado Boulevard, three new crosswalks with flashing pedestrian-activated lights were installed at Glen Iris, El Rio Avenue, and Hermosa Avenue. Councilman Jose Wezar's office worked with the LA Department of Transportation, the Bureau of Street Services, as well as community members in bringing forth these and other improvements to Colorado as part of the so-called "Take Back the Boulevard" initiative. The South Los Angeles Wetland Park Project was recently honored by the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure with the organization's highest honor, the Envision Platinum Award. The award was bestowed to the city's Bureau of Engineering and a consulting firm, not only for transforming what was a former brownfield site, but also for creating new urban green space and for designing the park to use urban runoff.
Stormwater is conveyed to the wetlands by underground systems that remove trash and other soils.
The park is bordered by South Avalon Boulevard and San Pedro Street between East 54th and East 55th Streets. The death of Marguerite Lamott back in December has left a vacancy in the LA Unified School District Board District 1 that will need to be filled with a special election to be held on June 3rd. Potential candidates will be able to declare their candidacy by filing a declaration of intention to become a candidate with the Office of the City Clerk Election Division, starting from Monday, February 10th to Tuesday, February 18th. Candidates may obtain detailed information and assistance by calling the Election Division at 213-978-0444, or by viewing the Candidate Information Section by going to cityclerk.lacity.org/election. One of California's most prominent African-American politicians is being remembered as a trailblazer and a champion of education. He passed away in 2012, but as Anita Bennett reports, his legacy lives on at a school in South LA.
D-D, hey, hey, hey! DHS, we are the best! D-D, D-DHS, D-D!
With the rousing welcome from its cheering squad, this high school in South LA is being renamed after Mervyn Diemley, one of California's political pioneers.
Mervyn Diemley was an extraordinary and remarkable man. Came from Trinidad, and he learned the political system very quickly.
Over his lifetime, Diemley broke a series of racial barriers. He was California's first black state senator and its first black lieutenant governor. After leaving state office, he was elected to Congress and represented South LA.
We are naming this school for him in an area that cherishes education, that can benefit from it, and will have him for always as a positive role model.
Before tossing his hat into politics, Diemley worked as an educator and later wrote a book about his journey. He died in 2012 at age 86.
I deeply regret that he's not with us today, but I feel confident to know that prior to his passing, he was very much aware that a school was being named after him.
Now his name and legacy will live on at LAUSD's Mervyn Diemley High School Academy for Multilingual Arts and Sciences.
Within this community, we are a multicultural community. To have someone of such distinction and a former lieutenant governor, the first African-American lieutenant governor of California, means the world to us.
And the high school here has more than 600 students, and they're all learning a second or even a third language. In South Los Angeles, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. The campus opened in 2012. Before being renamed, it was called South Region High School Number 12. In this week's List of Things to Do, an outdoor party celebrating Valentine's Day, the Harlem Globetrotters Come to Town, and the LA Zine Fest. Looking for a unique way to celebrate your loved one this Valentine's Day? Head on over to Grand Park Downtown for the Funky Soul Lovers Edition on Friday, February 14th, from 8:00 p.m. until 1:00 a.m. the next morning. The soul party will be complete with dance floor and live music, food trucks, and a full bar. This sweet dance party is presented in partnership with the Echo and Spaceland Presents. Grand Park is located at 200 North Grand Avenue Downtown. Go to grandparkla.org for details. The world-famous Harlem Globetrotters One-of-a-Kind shows feature mesmerizing ball handling, an assortment of trick shots, and high-flying dunks, all with an array of comedy guaranteed to entertain the whole family. And on Sunday, February 16th, the Globetrotters are coming to town, to Staples Center to be exact, for two games at 12:30 p.m. and at 5:45 p.m. And these games on February 16th take on a twist, as you, the fan, are invited to vote online for one of three new game-changing rules you want to see on the court. For details, to vote, or to buy tickets, go to harlemglobetrotters.com. Staples Center is located at 1111 South Figueroa Street. Anyone who's ever shopped the store at the LA Central Library knows it's got more than just books. The Library Store offers a carefully curated collection of fun and eclectic gifts, from whimsical t-shirts to educational toys for kids. And now, the Library Store on Wheels will be parking at the LA Zine Fest on Sunday, February 16th, from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. at Helms Bakery in Culver City, located at 8703 Washington Boulevard. The Zine Fest is an opportunity for people to share self-published works. A portion of your purchase from the Library Store supports the Los Angeles Public Library. For more info on the Zine Fest, go to lazinfest.com. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. It's one of our city's oldest annual traditions, the Golden Dragon Parade in Chinatown celebrating Chinese New Year. This year, the Year of the Horse. There's no mistaking this parade for anything else but the 115th Golden Dragon Parade in Chinatown. The never-ending dragon danced down North Broadway and Hill Street, delighting families who came out for the popular festival.
Just wishing everybody a great year of the horse, a proud tradition here in Los Angeles, the tradition of all of us, the Chinese-American community in particular and all they've contributed. So pleased to be the grand marshal, pleased to be the mayor of this great city.
Happy New Year!
Mayor Eric Garcetti, joined by his wife, walked the parade route, wishing everyone a prosperous new year. Councilman Gil Sadio, who represents Chinatown, also offered some auspicious predictions for this horse year.
We're going to plow forward like a horse with the thoroughbred of a mayor and his workhorse is behind him. We're going to change the city and make it a great year for everyone.
The Year of the Horse is believed to be a fortunate year that brings luck and good things.
It gives us time to spend time with our family and to give wishes to each other and hope each other live longer and prosper.
This year's celebration also included a children's festival, where kids got to try their hand at aerial acrobatics with this contraption, and no boat rides here. Instead, kids got to ride on the water in these floating bubbles. While the two-day festival celebrated an important Chinese holiday, it showcased the traditions from the East, as well as the diversity of our city, guaranteeing an experience that was uniquely LA. And after the parade, there were live music and acrobatic performances on several stages, as well as a craft beer garden and food trucks. If you missed it this year, definitely mark it on your calendar. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
What's with all the zombies?
Alert, LA County. Takes the surprise out of disasters like zombie attacks, and without surprise, they're out of a job.
Alert, LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email.
Any skills besides flesh-eating? Pick that up.
Events may include disasters, evacuations, safety notices, and if necessary, zombie attacks.
Next!
Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
911 Emergency Operator 271.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies.
911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond.
Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
All centers police department, what are you reporting?
I'm Jeff, this is JD from Sun Valley. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. That awesome?
Marquise O'Farrell.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. Good morning. I want to welcome everyone to the Los Angeles City Council today. Today is Tuesday, February 11th. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonneville, Busciano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Caress, Corrine, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrow, Parks, Price, West, and 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Busciano moves, Englander seconds. Next?
Commitment to resolutions for approval.
Martinez moves, O'Farrow seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, before we do that, I want to just delay for a moment. I want to thank everybody for coming today. Today is the official kickoff to Black History Month here in City Hall. Yeah, let's... We have a couple of things that will be going on today. We're gonna have our presentation in this beautiful council chambers. I want to give a special thanks to Commissioner Mike Davis and the mayor's office. Give them a round of applause. And for all of the other commissioners and volunteers from the mayor's office for helping make this possible. And I want to thank all of our honorees for coming. I also, where's Albert Lord? Albert Lord, I want you to give Albert Lord a round of applause. Albert works... Albert works for me. And also today, just off the rotunda, you'll see a beautiful display on the bridge. We've done this for years. We did it when President Obama was elected. I think we've honored Supervisor Yvonne Burke. We've done many things. Today's exhibit will be on black inventors. And there'll be a lot of inventors, many that you know. But we go as, we've got the inventor of the ice cream scoop. Ice cream scoop and egg beater. And so it's a very, very interesting display. And Albert put that together, so I hope all of you take a moment to go see that. Okay, give him a mercy applause. I want to thank the cameraman for kicking that off. Okay, also, and most importantly, we have our Author's Study Club to hear, that are here today. Will all the members of our Author's Study Club stand up, please, or wave? They are the power. They started this. Because of them, we do this program every year, and we cannot thank you enough. Now, with that said, are we... I'm looking for a sign. But I think we can start things off with... If we could have everybody rise and call our color guard forward. We'll begin with our pledge of allegiance. Color guard, please advance. We will be led in our flag salute today by, is Councilmember Parks, well, we'll... We'll be led in our flag salute by Councilmember Bernard Parks.
Thank you. Could everyone rise, face the flag, and place their right hand over their heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I'm gonna do my impersonation of a pastor. And that was the Fremont High School ROTC. Give them a round of applause. Fremont High. I would now like to call on Councilmember Current Price for a very special introduction. Mr. Price.
Good morning, members and guests. In this diverse city, it's important to celebrate our cultures and our heritage. Black History Month is a time to honor those who went before us. Those who helped lift us up so that we could be here today in these hallowed halls. This month, we remember inventors and innovators like George Washington Carver. Thinkers and motivators like Frederick Douglass. Andorators and authors like Shirley Chisholm. There are many more, whose messages still resound with us today. Whose voice we hear when we think for just one moment that we might not succeed. They tell us to keep going, that we have to fight for our young men and young women, so that every day is a better day. They tell me to fight for our communities, to make sure that they have access to the resources they need to fulfill their promise. So the next Shirley Chisholm, Barbara Jordan, or Barack Obama can rise from South LA. It's my pleasure and distinct honor to introduce our mayor, Eric Garcetti, who is here to honor some of those who make black history in our community. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilmember Price. Mr. President, it is wonderful to be back in these chambers, colleagues, where I spent 12 years of my life. And it is wonderful to be here for such a special occasion as well. Today, it is our honor here in the city of Los Angeles, a city that, if we remember our history, of course, the pobladores, the settlers, a majority of whom trace their ancestry to Africa. To celebrate in this month, African-American History Month in the city of Los Angeles, a city that has, from its moment of birth as a small dusty pueblo, been tied to those of African heritage. Been built and strengthened and made into the great city it is today by the contributions of those who have broken through barriers, who have built the buildings, who have innovated, who have invented, who have moved forward, not just this city, but indeed this state and this country and this world. As we celebrate African-American History Month in February, which is a great month, we're just noting that there's three of us, at least up here, with our birthdays in February. I'm very proud to share my birthday with Rosa Parks on February 4th. We celebrate not only a month full of accomplishment, of history made, but of history that we will make in this city. We look at the African-American community here in Los Angeles, and through that lens, we learn about ourselves. We learn this city's history, we learn humanity's history, and we make sure that the empowerment of this community, the enlightenment from this community, the thriving of this community, is each and every day. This month, we also celebrate how far we've come as a nation, and still how far we have to go. Later this week, the president will be announcing a Men and Boys of Color Initiative that shows us, not only have we made progress, but that there are too many who are still locked away from hope, that too many are locked up in the criminal justice system, too few are graduating, too few have jobs. And that is the work of these chambers and of this building. But the distance that we have traveled as a city and as a nation, we must always remember the price that has been paid. The march, the struggle, those who have fallen before us, and redouble our efforts for the fight that must continue. So first of all, I want to say a little history about this here. It's my pleasure to recognize the folks who have been the instigators, the authors, quite literally, of Black History Month here in Los Angeles, the Our Authors Study Club, for their incredible contributions. And if we could ask them to all stand that are here and thank them for the incredible leadership that they have provided in writing and rewriting our history. And I want to thank them. We have a proclamation for them in a little bit as well. I remember when I was council president, sometimes we would stretch these into over an hour. So I'm trying to be a very respectful mayor of the council's business.
Thank you very much, Mayor, thank you.
It's good to have an ex-council president as mayor. But I'd like to invite Councilmembers Price and Parks. Council President, if you want to join us, or if you want to stay in the chair, either way, to also unveil, at this moment, before we talk about the distinguished honorees that we have here today, the LA City Cultural Affairs Department. We have, of course, every month, we put together all the events that are happening in this city. And we unveil an original piece of art. The book that talks about the heritage from this month. And this book features all the major celebrations taking place in our great city during African-American Heritage Month. So we'll come over here and we'll unveil it right now. And any of the council members who want to join us, feel free.
No, go right ahead. No, I've got it. I'll stay here. If I leave my seat, Mr. Mayor, I have to watch Tom Labange may run in and sit in.
Each year, as part of African-American History Month, and I should note, for those who see a more abbreviated ceremony, again, out of respect, we still have the big party on the lawn, so we invite everybody out there afterwards. We'll be having a great time outside just after this. But each year, we honor extraordinary citizens, Angelinos, who have made extraordinary commitments and contributions to American culture in their chosen fields. We have three honorees that I'd like to go through, and then we have three awards that we're gonna be giving out. But first, if I can invite the Honorable Consuelo Marshall forward. We are honoring Judge Marshall, who is the first African-American woman to be chief judge in the Los Angeles federal court. An accomplishment we can all be extremely proud of. A distinguished jurist, somebody who has occasionally even city business before her, but is tough, is fair, is exactly what you want in a judge. But for every black girl growing up today, to see a woman of her stature and accomplishments means that they too can become a chief judge, maybe even a Supreme Court Justice one day. We honor you, the Honorable Consuelo Marshall. Stay where you are for a second. We'll give all three certs together. I'd like to now ask Dr. James Rosser to come forward as well. Dr. Rosser is somebody who is synonymous with education and innovation here in Los Angeles and throughout this country. He's the longest-serving African-American college president in California, serving for 30 years as the president of Cal State Los Angeles. A great campus just to the east of here, one that is educated, leaders, cultural ambassadors, academics, and the guidance that he provided this great campus, and the vision that he has brought. We thank him for his great service and all that he has done. So I'll ask Councilmember Price to hand off, please, another round of applause for Dr. James Rosser. And then another first, a woman who was first in so many different realms. A woman who has distinguished herself as a leader in local and in national government. The first African-American woman in the California Legislature, the first African-American woman in the United States Congress from California. A woman whose name is synonymous with uplifting the community. You can see the product of her work, whether it's parks or community centers, whether it's the infrastructure of the city, or the inspiration of the community. The one, the only Supervisor Yvonne Brathwaite Burke. So I can ask them to stand up here as the three pillars as we support the next honorees who are our awardees for this year. First is Charlie Wilson. Charlie Wilson, come on down, Charlie. Charlie Wilson is this year's 2014 Spirit of Los Angeles Award winner. Better known as Uncle Charlie. Charlie Wilson is an example that you can be successful if you have faith, if you have determination, and hard work, no matter what the odds. There isn't a single person in here today who isn't familiar with the Gap Band. In fact, if we started playing the music, I fear that the council president would might have to stand up and start dancing. We know we know that Charlie Wilson has inspired generations. He has touched our hearts, he has uplifted our spirits and our souls. And it is for this reason that we present to you the 2014 Spirit of Los Angeles Award, Charlie Wilson. And with these three, if you'll permit me, I'll have them say a few words. Please, Charlie Wilson.
Let's give it up for Mr. Wilson, Uncle Charlie.
Thank you so much. Good morning. I am humbled by this morning. I want to thank the mayor of our great city, Eric Garcetti, for honoring me as a part of the African-American Heritage Month celebration. While I was born in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, I am still proud to call myself an Angelino for the past 34 years. Never in a million years would I have imagined that my life's journey would have brought me to this time and this place. I think of my parents, who I hope are looking down, as I know that they would have been so proud of me right now. I am here by the grace of God and the faith that I have in Him. I am here, I've been sober for 19 years, clean and sober by His grace. I am cancer-free by His grace. I am married to a beautiful woman by His grace. I am married to a beautiful woman by His grace. I am married to a woman who has been the light of my life, that has helped me to achieve the goals that others said I would never reach. I hope that my life can be a beacon of hope to others. So thank you, Mayor Garcetti, and the City Council for this great honor. Bless you, thank you so much.
Our next awardee is also an angel in the city of angels. Angela Bassett is an extraordinary actress, incredible mother, and a great Angelino. She's a mother of seven-year-old twins, which should get an award just for that. But her portrayals have brought to life characters that have moved us, that have inspired us, that have shown us that here in Hollywood, we are the place where the great storytellers live. Her portrayal of Betty Shabazz in the Malcolm X Story with Denzel Washington earned her incredible attention and ACP Image Award. She's also a Golden Globe Award winner and an Academy Award nominee, triple threat. So today, we know that the work that she has done in embodying those characters, those people that have touched us, are only what we see in front of the camera. Anybody who's ever met Angela knows she's an extraordinary human being behind the camera, as a mother, as a committed citizen, to so many causes that she gets behind as well. And so, as for this reason, we are proud to add one more recognition to you today from your city, that you are the city's Dream of Los Angeles Award winner in the field of entertainment. Please give it up for the one, the only Angela Bassett.
I want to thank Mayor Garcetti, the Council President Wesson. It is always nice to always see that even under new leadership, the commitment and the recognition to applaud the diversity of this great city. And though my work takes me to many parts of the country and oftentimes many parts of the world, it is always a joy and an honor to come back to Los Angeles, the place that I call home. I grew up in Florida, which is another warm locale, and when I was yet young, I thought, you know, I would, you know, I'd go to college, go to UCLA or USC, but at the time, California seemed halfway across the world, and I only had enough adventure in me to travel north and not west at the time. So I did that, I went north, got a little education and a little experience under my belt, and I had some friends who were bold enough to make the Surjourn out here, and they said, "Come on, come on, this is how they get you, the weather's warm, come on, come on." So I did come, and there was a wonderful friend I had made at the time, who was like a fifth-generation Angelino, Win Brown, who lived here, and he encouraged me so much that, "You can come, you can work, you can make it, you can do it." And it meant so very, very much to me then, as it does every day. And so I came, and I slept on Andy's couch for 30 days, and then I slept on Joy's couch for another 30 days, and after a while, my six-month period was up. And I was only to come out here for six months, you know, to try it out, to test the waters. But then I called my uncle, my great uncle back in Harlem, who lived up the street from my rent-controlled apartment, and you know you don't give that up in New York. And he said just six words to me that encouraged me and helped me stay. I said, "It's going well, and I'm starting to get work, and I'm getting through in the door." And he said, "Don't get off a winning horse." And it clicked, it made sense, I suppose, out here in the wild, wild west. So I've stayed, I stayed here, I stayed on the horse, and I've been blessed to portray activists and artists and mothers and beautiful, beautiful souls, fiction or non, who are resilient and who fight and who survive. And I thank you indeed so much for this honor and this encouragement.
Well, our final awardee is a man who really needs no introduction. As a naval officer, I'm especially a huge fan of Lou Gossett Jr., because I remember his role as a drill instructor, as gunnery sergeant, and milfawly in the 1982, An Officer and a Gentleman, and it should have discouraged anybody from joining the military if you heard, see how tough he was. But he won an Academy Award for that role, for Best Supporting Actor, the finest actor of the year, and one who has built on that, that foundation to continue to impress, to express, and to embody the greatest elements of the human spirit. He was the first African American male to win an Oscar in a supporting role. He's also an Emmy Award winner for his role in Roots, and a Golden Globe Award winner for The Josephine Baker Story. Lou Gossett Jr. is an accomplished community leader as well. I've had private conversations with the man, and I have to say, even in a room full of notables, he's like E.F. Hutton, the entire room stops and listens when Lou Gossett Jr. speaks. He is somebody who continues to give back and give back and push others to do the same, even as he continues to work as one of the best actors of our generation. He is somebody who has embodied what is great about Los Angeles. I know he travels around as well, and I hope both Angela and you get more opportunities to stay here in L.A. Paul Kukorian, Mitch O'Farrell, others are working on making sure, Kern Price, making sure we can get some tax credits to bring more filming back to California, which would be a nice, nice thing. But Lou Gossett Jr. embodies this city, and it is a great, great honor for me to bestow the Lifetime Achievement Award on this African American History Month in the city of Los Angeles to the one, the only Lou Gossett Jr.
There you go. All right. Who are you now? All right, get down, give me 50. I'm deeply honored, obviously, I've been in these halls so many times, starting with Tom Bradley, and now the royalty, there's a royal family here in Los Angeles, the Garcetti family. Here's one of the representations, and of course, mi amigo, Villarreal Gosa. So I've had a long relationship with this town, I'm very grateful for the award, and all the credit goes to God. That's number one in my life, as long as I remember that, everything is okay. So I've had this long relationship, love affair, with the city of Los Angeles. It's in a position now to be the number-one city for diversity in America. Every 10 blocks, you have another language. It's like that commercial song in the middle of the Super Bowl, that Los Angeles personifies possibly the first successfully diverse city in the country, successfully, so that other cities can copy. The other credit goes to my great-grandmother, who sits on my shoulders on a daily basis, and she probably died approximately at the age of 115. So she's not dead, she's up here, and she's taught me some lessons. And I remember one lesson, one cold winter morning, she was the mother of the First Baptist Church of Sheepshead Bay. She couldn't read, she couldn't write, and she dipped railroad mill snuff in her mouth, and she said some very foreign things, some very familiar things. One was, "God was here before you got here." She said, "God is gonna be here while you're here." She may as well calm on down and let Him run things. So one winter, she was sitting in the kitchen with her two girlfriends, well over 80 years old, and one of the ladies was worried about how old and senile she was getting. She had the doorway, the door of the refrigerator open for about five minutes, trying to remember what she wanted to get out of the refrigerator. And the second one was worried why she was standing in the closet for about 10 minutes, trying to remember what she wanted to get in the closet. And my great-grandmother says, "You should be ashamed of yourselves, talking about how old and senile you're getting." I'm 10 years older than both of you, and thank God. Who is it? Thank you.
Thank you, let's give him a round of applause.
That is a tough one to top, but I know those council members probably want to speak. I see a city attorney who would feel like to join us, maybe say a couple of words. We'd like to present to our Authors Study Group, who has started this incredible tradition that has resulted in the flowering of these three amazing awardees, these four incredible honorees today. Please give it up for them one more time and thank them for the incredible work that
Okay, now I hope you guys have taken all of the photographs you need, because we still have, we have to wind down this program.
Okay, 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 all right, that's enough.
All right, at this time, I'd like to acknowledge for a few words, and if everybody would just remain, our newly-elected city attorney, Mike Fuer. Give Mike a round of applause.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to say just a couple of things. First of all, we have some especially distinguished honorees, but as a city attorney, I get to point out that our honoree Judge Marshall served in the city attorney's office, correct? For five distinguished years, if I'm not mistaken.
Wonderful.
Yeah, for which the city is very grateful, as well as your continued distinguished service. Just want to say the following, you know, so often in Los Angeles, we talk about our diversity and we insert the word tolerance into the conversation, we're a tolerant community. I really don't like the use of that word when we talk about how we can achieve greatness in Los Angeles, because tolerance connotes something about the other person that we don't really like, but will live with for the sake of peace in the community. What is so special about African American Heritage Month is that we transcend notions like tolerance, to recognize and appreciate and respect the enriching value of each member of our community. Today, we celebrate the African American community's incredible achievements here in Los Angeles. We are so fortunate in this city that our diversity is a source of strength. And African American Heritage Month is typical of what the best of Los Angeles has to offer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now our city comptroller, Ron Galperin, give Ron a round of applause. Ron, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, all those who are assembled here. I can't tell you what an honor and what a pleasure it is to be here to celebrate the beginning of African American History Month. But it's not just African American history, it's not just black history, it is American history, it is California history, it is American history, and it is a history that is still in the making, and we're getting to make a little part of it this morning as we are gathered here today. It's a history of rich heritage, of creativity, of overcoming and triumphing over adversity. It's a history of resistance and of moral conscience, a history of leadership, a history of faith, and a history of justice. And we have to remember that we, each and every one of us, have a responsibility to continue to write that history as the trajectory of history continues, so that we can continue to achieve changes that are so desperately needed and build on the great accomplishments that we've had. Thank you so very much for the honor of being here, for the honor of being here with these great honorees who have been a light to Los Angeles and to our whole nation. Bye-bye, thank you.
Thank you very much. And to our mayor and to everyone that's assembled today. I want you to know that it is with pride that I preside over this meeting today, the first African American elected president of the Los Angeles City Council. And you know, the coolest thing about being the first is I know I will not be the last. So that is the coolest thing. So anyway, with that said, I'd like to call on Mr. Sadio to say a few remarks, and we'll begin again to ramp down our program. Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, thank you very much, you know my history, we're friends, we have a long, long history. I want to thank and acknowledge African American History Month, but I want to tell a personal story. I want to say thank you, because I've had a rich life, a great life, driver's licenses for two and a half million immigrants, the Dream Act, it's been really rich and wonderful. But I started with a mentor, and that mentor's name was Winston Dobie. He was out of L.A. High, and he just started at UCLA, and he took a 15-year-old kid and gave me an opportunity. He took me to UCLA with him, spent three summers there, as you know, went there as an undergrad, he became a vice chancellor, and then he introduced me to another mentor, Mayor Tom Bradley, and Bill Alkins. And I got to work for those men over 30 years ago. And then, you know, my career went to Local 660, where I represented a predominantly African American union. In fact, that's where we met, Supervisor, successful campaign for Supervisor.
I should have listened to you, I did listen to you.
My board did it. And that's where I got to really develop a personal relationship with the Reverend Jesse Jackson and the Reverend James Lawson. And so for those 12 glorious years, STIU Local 660 was, I would say, the premier union in this city, this county, the state if not the nation. We saved Martin Luther King Hospital, we saved General Hospital, saved thousands of jobs, and made sure that every county worker was treated with dignity and respect. And then I went to the Legislature, became a state senator, and as a state senator, I met, through you, Mr. Mayor, another young state senator, and had the privilege of working for him in Texas, in Nevada, in California. Today, that young man is the president of our nation. And so all I want to say is for all that I've done, I could not have done any of it without the mentorship of great African American men and women who gave me an opportunity. Thank you so much, God bless you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sadio. And Mr. Mayor, as we close this out, is Pastor Boyd. Pastor Boyd, are you here, Pastor?
Oh, yes, he is.
I'm gonna have Pastor Boyd end this instead of beginning it, and we're gonna ask for Nita Watson to come up after the pastor, we'll all rise and we'll sing the Negro National Anthem. So if we could all rise, Pastor Boyd, welcome, this is your house.
Thank you. Mr. President, and members of the City Council of Los Angeles, and to distinguished mayor, Eric Garcetti, others who are part of the civil government, those who are in entertainment communities, and those of us who are private citizens, we are indeed honored today to stand in this chamber to recognize what God has done in the lives of so many African Americans, blacks who are here. I suspect that even though we are very proud of our president, having been elected the first black president beyond the states of America, I must admit, along with a lot of other folk, that we were probably black for many more seasons than we were African Americans. So we recognize them both, let us pray. Eternal and gracious God, Thou who has been our dwelling place from everlasting to everlasting, Thou who from the midst of who You created us to become, reached way down and deep inside of us, and found those gems that You placed there to help us to rise to the level of responsibility and accountability. responsibility and accountability. You brought us from the meager, slow, low walks of life, all the way to the top. And we dare today to gather in this assembly and ask your blessings upon these heroes and heroines who have been here highlighted and recognized and commended for their achievements in their life's work here in Los Angeles and in the state of California. Bless them and dwell them. Help us, O God, to gather the strength and energy from within ourselves to move forward in the life of this city, so that we can help it to become all that it can be, with the amalgamation of the many races and ethnic groups that are part of it. And may what we here celebrate today, may it engender itself deep down in the lives of our sons and our daughters, so with pride and love and understanding and appreciation, they can rise high to achieve well and to go to existences beyond where we are today, so that every one of us will be made proud of them, but the city and this community will be made the better. Blessed, O God, we pray these efforts here in this chamber today, and may the resolute changes and the resolute commitments that have been made here far exceed our expectation in achieving and reaching what the life goal of all of us is, and that is bringing all of us together, so we can learn to live together as brothers and sisters lest we perish as fools. In his name we pray now and always, amen.
Everybody sing. Nita Watson. Ms. Watson, I've heard that song a million times, and it's not, I mean, you put something different. You put a little twist on it, all right? It was special. Anyway, let's give another round of applause for our African-American History Month. Don't forget to stop at the bridge to see our display, and there's a ceremony on the South Lawn. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Commissioner Mike Davis, Commissioner Mike Davis, thank you. Excellent job, excellent job. Thank you all for coming. As we clear the chambers, we will then resume our council duties. So in fact, Madam Clerk, with temporarily, until we clear the chambers, recess this meeting. And ladies and gentlemen, you could exit from both ways. You could go out the back and then wrap around and go to the South Lawn. So it may be quicker to exit from the rear. It may be quicker to exit from the rear and just take the hallway to the South Lawn. So if we could please exit the rear of the chambers as well, exit the rear. This council will remain recessed for another few minutes. Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're now back in session. Where are we on today's agenda? Is it time to go through the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, before we begin, there's a request by member to continue items 17 to tomorrow, February 12th.
Without objection, that'll be the order? If you could please be quiet as you exit the chambers. Again, good job to our Commissioner Mike Davis, excellent job. Okay, where are we now, Madam Clerk?
Item 1 is an item known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that item 1E, F, and K may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, do we have cards?
Yes, there's cards.
Let's hold that. Let's move on to items 2 through 14.
Items 2 through 14 are items which public hearings have been held.
Do we have specials, members, specials? See, now let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, and I think we had with us in the back children from the Tom Bradley Global Awareness Magnet. Give them, there they are in the back, give them a round of applause. Young people, thanks for coming, thanks for visiting us today. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Items 15 through 18 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Cards on items 15 through 18.
Okay, then we will hold those, and that would bring us where?
On the supplemental agenda, item 19 is an item which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, that item is now before us. Do we have any cards?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move on.
Item 20 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, is this your concern, 20? So we will hold that. We will hold that on the desk. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council to items called special or general public comment.
Okay, we will go to item 15. Item 15 was called special by Mr. Walsh and Mr. Herman. So Mr. John Walsh, you could please come forward, and Mr. Herman.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWashConfidential.wordpress.com. Today's Black History Month celebration was even greater than last year. I never miss them. Okay, this is item 15. Again, this is the item known as REAP. This is the, again, you're doing an excellent job. I always say to everybody out there, you better know what a code violation is, you better go to your landlord, and if your landlord doesn't fix it up, then the government comes in, the city comes in, and he doesn't get the rent anymore, they get it till your apartment or your home, rented home is fixed. HollywoodHighlands.org, a great Black awareness History Month.
Mr. Herman.
Distinguished guests who are here for the African-American Heritage Month, congratulations to y'all. But now again, we're talking about REAP, Rent Escrow. It's a good thing. So all of you who are impacted to the habability of your life in your rented home, now there's an outlet to get yourself situated so you're living comfortably in your rented home, and not living illegally like some do in illegal garage conversions. But in a matter and tone, so I can save my minute of time for other subjects, let's take a look at this deeply, and hopefully with accountability, that this program does work, as long as there's no extortion involved in REAP and Rent Escrow. Thank you. One minute, please.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, I believe we need to vote for reconsideration on item 4. So if we could now vote on reconsideration, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And that will be continued one week, and that would bring us where, Madam Clerk? One week from today.
February 18th.
Okay, and I do want to congratulate the commissioners that were approved earlier today. Now we'll move to item 16, which was called special by Mr. Walsh. John Walsh, please come forward. We are on item 16.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and tweeting now, reactivated, @HollywoodDems. Okay, this again concerns sewer assessment fees. If you're a property owner and they do assessments, sewer assessments for you, upgrades, then the city charges you, and then you have a chance to appeal at it. So here, what they're doing here is setting up a deadline, a public hearing date. Of course, we're in favor of that, and generally speaking, you just don't see backed-up sewers in this city the way you do in other cities. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now we'll move on to item 18. I have Marion Dodge, Jim McQuiston. I didn't see Jim, but Jim, if you're here, and Victor Marmone, if you guys would come forward.
Good morning, council members. I'm Marion Dodge, president of the Hillside Federation, representing 43 homeowners associations with 200,000 constituents spanning the Santa Monica Mountains. Last night, city attorney Mike Fuhr spoke to our homeowners association about his goal to reduce the amount of money the city pays out in lawsuits. You can start that policy today by voting no on this 245. At Plum on another 245, council member Hweezer asked the city attorney if it was okay. He replied, yes. He replied yes, if it meets the findings, if it meets the findings. Councilmember Huizar was concerned that there would be more challenges to the city in terms of approval of individual projects for variances, that the city would lose more of these variance cases. The findings for Bellagio Road cannot be met. Therefore, the Federation urges you to do the right thing, uphold the correct decision of the West Area Planning Commission, uphold the baseline hillside ordinance which all of you supported, and reject this 245. Give us a city council that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Mr. McQuiston?
Jim McQuiston, you know, I don't usually come in here on 245s because they're more or less automatic, but this one cost the city, and it's really legally not substantiated at all. And so I'm asking you to do the right thing and not approve this one, 245. I understand that people are pressed to be comity in this organization, but we do have to worry about our budgets, and the people who have to manipulate this in city council, and also office city council in the departments, are badly pressed these days to do things that are more important than this one. If these people want to contest this, it's ripe for going into court, but I would advise them not to try to do that, because it's legally already decided that this kind of case cannot succeed. So please, let's pass on this one.
Okay, yes, sir, Victor, please come forward, followed by John Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is, excuse me, and council members. My name is Victor Marmone, although I like the pronunciation Marmone better, and I ask that you vote no on the motion before you. In the context of land use decisions, the purpose of Charter Section 245 is not to provide a way for an applicant to obtain a special appeal to the city council of a decision that is not otherwise appealable. The purpose of Section 245 is to enable the council to correct the action of a commission that has gone off the rails. But the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission has not gone off the rails when it granted the appeal and denied the request for a 50-foot height variance in this case. The commissioners examined the record, they read the transcript of the hearing before the ZA, and they went through each of the five findings for a zone variance with the ZA and the applicant's representatives. The commission found that none of the five findings could be made. As just one example, the evidence before the ZA, as confirmed, showed, by the ZA and the applicant's representative, showed that a comparable house could have been designed without a variance, but it was not so designed because the applicant wanted a consistent roofline, which is contrary to the intent of the baseline hillside ordinance, which is to encourage the terracing of structures so that building mass is broken up. The West LA Area Planning Commissioners take the role seriously that you've appointed them to, as shown by their careful examination of the record and their detailed determination letter. Before you cause the significant expenditure of city resources and the adoption that the adoption of this motion would entail, I believe that you should actually read that determination letter, and I've provided a copy to each of you before my speech. I ask that you deny this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Okay, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Let me explain this for people out there watching in plain English, because I'm sure you're confused. Somebody on Bellagio Road wanted to build a home 14 feet higher than is currently permitted by local code. In order to do this, they went to the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator said, "Fine, the hell with the neighbors, let's build big mansions on Bellagio Road." Then it went, there was appeal by neighborhood people to the planning commission, and the planning commission sided with the neighborhood and said, "No, you can't build except to a limit of 36 feet." Now, what someone is doing is appealing the zoning commission's decision, and they want the whole city council. It's Mr. Corretts. I don't know if he's a friend of this person who wants to put a mansion up, I don't know if it's a mansion, but I know what's happening here. I hope you understand, because what they want to do is confuse you with gobbledygook. If you out there would love to have houses in your neighborhood 10, 20, 30 feet higher than they are now under law, then you should side with Mr. Corretts. He's sitting there with his hand over his mouth, embarrassed. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're disrupting the meeting. Sit down. I did not have a card with your name on it, sergeant's look for card. Mr. Corretts, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll begin when the gentleman in the audience stops disrupting the meeting, Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Corretts.
I'll begin when Mr. Dahl has to halt his interrupting of the meeting.
Go right ahead.
Colleagues, before us now is a land use issue located within my district. The matter involves a property seeking a variance for an over-height home. However, I feel there are extenuating circumstances which exist.
Hold on, Mr. Corretts. Would sergeants, would you please help him understand that he needs to be quiet at this point? And you disrupt the meeting, when you turn your card in late, you don't get caught on. That's it, Mr. Corretts.
Yes, anyway, I believe there are extenuating circumstances which make the practical application of this code difficult. Among those difficulties are a city mandated stream and buffer which cut through the property, making a substantial portion of the property unusable. Additionally, the sloping of the topography both up and downhill further restrict the development capabilities of the site. Those limiting features have created hardships that have caused a very small portion of the home to be above code height, which would not be the case if this were a flat property. The zoning administrator, after extensive research, recognized these problems and approved the variance request. The planning commission in West LA area overturned the zoning administrator's approval. The neighborhood organization representing this area is not in opposition. Having reviewed this case myself, I feel that there's at least enough evidence for this body to exert Charter Section 245 and remand this item to Plumb so we can have a thorough evaluation of the case, and I ask for your support, and I vote.
Okay, let's, on this item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's move to Item 19. Called special by Mr. Walsh, if you'd come forward, and on 19, we also have Juan Akala. So please come forward. Mr. Walsh passes, Mr. Akala.
I did have a card on the previous item.
No, you're going to speak to this item. This item is 19.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Item 19, continued consideration. Oh, by the way, you passed the other item, even though the people didn't...
Okay, no, you're not speaking on this item.
Continued consideration of motion part, west relative to conducting a public hearing in accordance with the Tax Equity of Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, TFR, for the Jefferson, Tavern, and Cunningham Village projects. City council should not have much to do with people's housing, and you just made an exception for somebody because they have money. So city council is all about money. City politics, all politics are dirty politics.
Let's sit, let's stay on this item. Okay, his time has expired. Let's open the roll on this item. Let's open the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's send this forthwith. Okay, now we're going to call Item 1. So on 1B, I have Xiaodan Yang, Mr. Herman, Rick Troncoso, maybe Rena Castillo, if you please come forward, John Gallagher. Okay, now we got a crowd. Go right ahead.
I'd like to request to continue the hearing.
Identify yourself first. What's your name?
Yes, Rena Castillo.
Okay.
And I came for, to represent my two adult kids who are out of the country. It's 1602 West Adams property.
1602, you'd like a...
A continuance, because...
Okay, well, here, let me just, I'll hold that for one second.
Yes, thank you.
And we'll contact the staff and see what your councilman wants to do with that. Okay, so you can go to the side. Next speaker?
Yes, good morning. I'm here on 1D, which is a matter concerning 2641 North Crenshaw Boulevard. My name is Rick Troncoso, I am the property manager for Naco Inc.
Could you repeat that?
Sure. My name is Rick Troncoso, I'm the property manager for Naco Inc., and this is concerning the site at 2641 South Crenshaw Boulevard. Naco Inc. is actually just the owner of this property, and not the business in violation. The business in violation is a tenant of Naco Inc., and we have repeatedly requested that they provide us with evidence that they have complied with the terms of their lease and actually paid the inspection fee.
So let me interrupt you. Madam Clerk, can I continue this 30 days?
Okay, that's till March 18th.
Okay, we'll continue it. If you'd speak to the gentleman to your left, he's waving at you now. Okay, Mr. Herman, do we have a card for you on this? Item 1, come forward.
Residents of Los Angeles, these building and safety issues are out of hand. This is extortion, a practice by organized crime, which means the infliction of something causing somebody an unpleasant harm. To endure something, as I will put it very clearly, this is robbery. People with these notifications were never notified on time, and they're absent homeowners or business owners, and then the city goes about it. Are you listening, Angelinos? Because this affects you in the future. The city goes about it, they put a lien on your property, they put citations against your property, and this is an act of predatory abuse, predatory abuse. The same way you handle homelessness by banning them from public sidewalks, this is the same typical unforgiving action, retaliatory. And I'm demanding that there be a motion to discuss how and where this city goes out of line to harm people with these actions of, for example, Item 1, West Adams, $6,000 lien, and what about the gentleman coming up pretty soon at 1905 East I Street, lien for $4,148.64? I can read this to all you Angelinos, and you will be disgusted. John Walsh, you're right, I'm disgusted. I'm sick and tired of seeing these citations brought about by building and safety to your constituents who are here pleading at an economical crisis that they cannot afford to pay these dues. So either you sit down, reduce them, or even better, ban this program until there's a thorough investigation into the conduct of building and safety. Thank you.
Okay, if we could get Xiaodan Yang, Gallagher, John Gallagher, Sean Murphy, John Walsh. Sean, you're up on this. Mr. Walsh and Akala, Juan Akala.
Yeah, I'm against this, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or at JWalshconfidential.wordpress.com. I'm not going to use two minutes. I don't have to squeeze every second. In fact, I don't even enjoy saying these things half the time. Do not lean, L-E-A-N, on property owners for phony liens, L-I-E-N-S. Those are homonyms, homonyms, also known as homonims. Do not, again and again, we see you come to these meetings, people showing up here with a bewildered look on their face. The first thing they heard was in a registered letter that their property is about to be snatched for them because they haven't paid the $3,000 or $4,000 lien, and when they come here, the city councilman sits down with them, and everything is settled. Why do the city councilmen have to do the job of building and safety? All they have, they're like the guys or the ladies who clean up after the elephants. The elephant is building and safety.
Juan Akala?
Well, if I were religious, I would say city council has the face of the devil, a money-grabbing devil that will not let the citizens be free, that will not let the citizens have a little place to live. Give me your money, here goes a lien because I didn't like your eucalyptus tree. Here's another lien because there was a rock on your lawn that shouldn't have been there. Here is a lien for whatever I want to make up. And look at the city streets, they're not fixed. I ride the city streets on my bicycle, and it is very dangerous. You are not fixing anybody's problems, you are only creating more problems. You are zipping, you are conniving, you are murderers, because you leave people out on the street, and you just rob society. I don't know how the hell you got elected. You're a bunch of dickheads.
All right, thank you for sharing that. We were, John Calligan was already called once, twice, come on up. Welcome, sir. Please.
I was responding to the lien on my property. And I had gotten a building permit to comply to the order that was issued, and when I got that permit, I was told I had to pay all the fees that had been incurred up to that point. I did that, and so therefore there should be no fees owed. If you need a receipt of the permit, I have it.
This is for Council District 1.
Correct.
Staff will come talk you on the side of the ropes, I believe, so we'll go ahead and hold that item. 1H, Antonio Rivera... One H, Antonio Rivera. I believe is already on the side of the ropes, speaking for Antonio Rivera. So we'll go ahead. Council members, on item one B, it'll be continued for two weeks until February twenty-fifth. On one D, it'll be continued for sixty days until April fifteenth. On one G and one H, they're on the side of the ropes. I'm sorry, you're with?
Yeah, this one is.
And one C will be two weeks as well. That will take, I'm sorry, not one C, one A will also be two weeks, which will take us to February twenty-fifth. So again, that was February twenty-fifth on A and B, April fifteenth for number D. And then G and H. G is still conferring? H, H, go ahead, please. We can get you an interpreter as well, sir.
What I want to tell you is that I am not the owner of the business, but the owner They're charging me for all this when this doesn't belong to me. The renter, he left, and I didn't know that he didn't pay for his license. Yeah, and what I wanted to tell you is, how should I pay? I do have the name of the person, the previous renter here. Yeah, and I also have my, my tax report that shows that I don't earn any money.
Yes. Mr. President, we have staff here. We'll speak to them if you give us a few minutes. Okay, we'll go ahead and hold, hold that on the desk. So if we can hold G and H on the desk, on those two, and we'll go ahead and open the items, all the balance of these items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, then those will pass. On one G, we'll actually go ahead and hold that for thirty days. So it'll actually extend, I believe, councils on recess. It'll be March eighteenth, would be the next available meeting after the fourteenth.
Okay, I'm gonna go to general public comment for a few minutes. Bill Hui. Donna Piramid, please come forward. And Sean Murph, Sean, you're third.
Good morning, Council President Weston, members of the L.A. City Council. My name is Bill Hui. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition. This is an organization that believes in fairness and equality under the law for housing providers, landlords, and renters. One of our attorneys just had two wins in Superior Court against the LHD, and the two different judges decided the way the LHD puts people in REAP is a lack of due process of law. Now, the LHD has decided to ignore these two court rulings. They just are continuing on business as usual. The problem is that one of my landlords wants to start running TV commercials and gather a thousand landlords who have been damaged by the LHD and launch individual lawsuits against the city. This could be a huge tsunami of liability for the city of L.A. Now, I contacted Mayor Garcetti, and he appointed a senior deputy to sit with us and meet with the LHD. And both times we had a meeting, the top people at the LHD said they couldn't come to the mayor's office because of a scheduling conflict. How can you work for the city, be summoned by the mayor's office, and respond saying, I can't come, I'm doing something else, I'm doing my laundry that day? So this is indicative of the horrible attitude and the perverse culture inside the LHD. It started with Mercedes Marquez. She left after a major television network interviewed her for an upcoming documentary on the LHD. When this documentary comes out, I'm sad to say, it's gonna make L.A. look like a highly corrupt city inept, where people pay taxes, get very little in return, and the city steals property. I'm glad to meet with anyone on the council who wants to look into this matter. I'm Bill Hui, fairhousingcoalition.com. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Come forward, followed by Sean. Yes.
I'm Donna Piramid. Marion couldn't come, a two-hour drive here, ride here, and two to three hours back, and with the big long dog pony show, and she has asthma, it's not right to ask her. Me and her should be in Van Nuys. Closing down Van Nuys video conferencing, silence is the voice of the people of the San Fernando Valley, thousands or more voices, a lot more. We need to have it reopen. These people are, many people are affected by Metro. The seven sixty-one bus going down Van Nuys Boulevard to Westwood will be discontinued with only one meeting in the whole San Fernando Valley, little notice, very little time to protest for an expensive rail project. We need the Van Nuys bus to Westwood. They can add Sepulveda to the Westwood if they like, an extra bus, we need more buses to Westwood. Also a problem, people who have driver's license, only California ID are given the same rights in car accidents, those with driver's license. No insurance, no registration, no driver's license, no problem. How about car going the wrong way on the freeway with the DUI causing deaths? Driving in, no problem. Expired driver's license, no problem. In my opinion, it is a problem. But they don't, but we can't hear it because they closed down the Van Nuys video conferencing. Also, we need to vote on Mike Fuer. My opinion, he's a, he's like a dictator, making it impossible, middle class to be afford gun protection with the microscapping in the barrel, which can also jam the gun. Resident gets caught, it's a, it's a rich man's law, political law to stock, to stockpile our guns. But terrorists and criminals will get them and will take out the microchip. Gun manufacturers don't like it. I thought you liked businesses, taking away business tax for large businesses to give, to, it's when we need the revenue. This is not right. We don't take away the business tax and video conferencing, bring it back.
Thank you. Sean, come on. Come forward, Sean.
Yes, good morning, Mr., yeah, good morning, Mr. President. I enjoyed the meeting on Friday and African-American today. First time I ever heard, hear the organ in these chambers in fifty, fifty years almost. MTA wants, I want to tell my fans to please come to the MTA board meeting on Saturday, the twenty-ninth of March. They want to raise the goddamn fares, we are against it.
Sean, Sean, Sean. Okay, so that's the last of our general public comment for right now. Mr., no, I'm not done. Calm down, I'm not done. Mr. O'Farrell, we're gonna go to item twenty. And you, there are cards on this item, so I would recommend we do the cards first. And maybe we do a minute each. Okay, Mr. Walsh. Or is Mr. Walsh out of town? Sorry, John, they tell me you're out of town. So if I can get Annie Gagan, George Abrahams, and a Carrie Morrison, come forward. One moment, one minute each.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thousands across Hollywood and L.A. opposed the Higher Density Hollywood Community Plan and pointed out flaws with the plan. No one listened. Three groups sued. Judge Goodman ruled the Hollywood Community Plan out and called it fatally flawed, among other things. Today, the Hollywood Community Plan comes before city council again. If you support it, you support Millennium. If you support Millennium, you support promised funds going to zones of East Hollywood and Hollywood where the Millennium projects are. And how will you explain to your constituents when they are told there's no money for parks or projects in their areas, somewhat needier areas? Go back and tell them that. And in the meantime, Happy Black History Month.
Thank you. Next. You could be Carrie, you don't have to, and then we'll have Mr. Abrams come after you.
Good morning.
In the interest of time, George, why don't you come, go right ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the L.A. City Council. I'm Carrie Morrison with the Hollywood Property Owners Alliance, and I'm representing the property owners in the Sunset and Vine bid and the Hollywood Entertainment District bid. I want to make three very quick points. I think this community plan is worthy of an appeal. Number two, I would encourage you to stand by your staff, your excellent staff in the planning department and all the work that they did. And number three, if you don't appeal this plan, I think it portends a slippery slope for future community plans in this city. Very quickly, I will say that we believe this is a good plan that envisions the future of Los Angeles. It is being challenged by people who are really living in the past. If I were a staff person in your planning department, I would feel demoralized that after eight years and more than a hundred and twenty community meetings, that my city council did not stand up for our work. And if I were a council member who had a community plan on the horizon, I would be worried that if you don't stand up and appeal this plan.
Thank you.
It will compromise future ones.
Thank you very much. Okay, next. And after, after you, we'll have Lori, Lori Goldman, and Alfredo Hernandez, I believe it is, and Tina Hussein. Okay, go right ahead.
George Abraham, SaveHollywood.org, I'm the petitioner. The ACPU failed on three principal issues, the lack of an accurate population baseline in which to make projections, lack of a monitoring policy to be able to document, inadequate infrastructure to support increase in population, and a lack of consideration of a reasonable range of alternatives, including the downzoning option. The court was profoundly critical, he said, quote, fundamentally flawed and fatally so. The ACPU and its accompanying EIR contained errors of fact and of law that compel granting relief, failure to proceed in the manner required by law, prejudicial abuse of discretion, failure to include relevant information, meaningful public review assorted by the city's pyrrhic rush to a final approvals. The ACPU is unsupported by anything other than wishful thinking. In the face of this severe reprimand, there's really no point in appealing. I warned you at the beginning that we would be back.
Thank you, George. Thank you, Mr. Abrahams. Okay, Lori, come forward again, Alfredo Hernandez, and Tina Hussein.
Good morning, council members. I'll be brief, because I agree with my friend and colleague Carrie Morrison. I'm Lori Goldman, Executive Director, Friends of the Hollywood Central Park. And for more than fourteen years and more than a hundred and seventy community meetings, I have worked with my friends, my neighbors, my resident, my fellow residents in crafting, shaping, and supporting the Hollywood Community Plan. As Carrie said, please support your planning staff who worked so hard on this plan, and support the businesses and residents that want you to vote for a full appeal of Judge Goodman's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sir.
Morning, council members. My name's Alfredo Hernandez. I've been a lifetime member, resident of Hollywood. And for many years, we worked really hard to get this community plan. And we worked with staff, we worked for too long, and we had, we do support this plan. The community does support it, it's just a few individuals that like to be loud and oppose it. I fully support and I request that you guys support and appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could please come forward and identify yourself and hold one second. So after you, we'll have, and I can't make out the first name, is there a Shaheenian? Okay, you're next, and give me your first name. And is Marion still here, Dodge? We have her to wrap things up. Go right ahead.
All right. Good morning, council members. My name is Tina Hussein. I'm here representing the Los Angeles area Chamber of Commerce and our sixteen hundred members employing six hundred and fifty thousand people throughout the region. We're here to encourage the city council members to appeal the Hollywood Community Plan. This is a landmark planning document that really had a lot of buy-in and support from the business community, as well as Hollywood neighbors and residents. It would send a bad signal to the business community if this plan were not upheld, as well as possibly jeopardize other community plans that are under development right now. We believe that this plan will bring a lot of positive job growth and economic development to the area, so it's critical that it moves forward and that it supports the vision and a buy-in of the community and the businesses that have worked so hard to pass and approve this plan. Please support and appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If you would come forward, followed by Ms. Dodge, followed by Mr. Akala. Yes.
Good morning, Nicole Shaheenian with the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. After eight years and more than a hundred and fifty community meetings, the L.A. City Council approved the Hollywood Community Plan unanimously. As adopted, the community plan provides a blueprint for future growth in Hollywood that is designed to protect our neighborhoods and direct future growth into the core area of Hollywood around the transit centers. The idea behind the plan is to create a much more livable and pedestrian-friendly Hollywood community where the car is no longer king, people have choices for getting around, and the streets are more inviting and walkable. The plan provides policies that preserve wider sidewalks, support comprehensive streetscape plans and boulevard improvements, and enhance protections of open space. The chamber believes it benefits everyone to have a community plan for Hollywood that establishes clear policy based on current conditions. We have a plan that does just that. The Chamber of Commerce stands by the principles that the planning department and overall city family have established in the Hollywood Community Plan update. We ask the city to move forward in the most expedient way possible to ensure the plans are realized.
Thank you. Ms. Dodge, followed by Wanakala, followed by Herman.
Good morning again, I'm Marion Dodge, President of the Federation of Hillside and Canyon Associations. While the Hollywood Community Plan has some serious faults that needs to be addressed, it also contains many good elements and numerous protections for the hillside. The Federation urges council to exercise caution in reviewing the plan. Please do not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Akala.
Please do not throw the baby out with the bathwater. See, you are a dirty city. You are a dirty city, and I, I see it every day.
That has nothing to do with the item one.
Oh, yeah, another high-rise, yeah, put people in little cages so that somebody can get filthy rich and somebody can be a slave all their lives. Thank you.
Mr. Herman.
Is this general public comment?
No, so on item twenty.
This is my last minute. Residents of Los Angeles, let's, let's tear down these walls or these barriers. Let's listen to the folks here who want your interest to oppose these ideas, these ridiculous ideas of housing. It's not intrusive, but rather it's creating a genocide that we read in the paper and we all know and see on a daily basis out on our streets, because if there was a solution to resolve this issue, then really, we wouldn't have the problem with homelessness and every individual, every Angelino in Los Angeles would have a home and not be violated by this city. Save your thirteen seconds.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell, before we actually go into closed session, I would like our translator to inform the gentleman who had a concern about item one, and I believe one H, that that item will be continued for thirty days. And what date would that bring that to? Madam Clerk?
March eighteenth.
Okay, so with that said, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Price is on the queue. Okay, so that, we'll eliminate that. Mr. O'Farrell, you want to go straight to closed session, or you want to make a statement before?
Let's go to closed session. Thank you.
Okay, now, we're having public comment. Let me explain this. We're on item twenty. When we finish item twenty, we will then re- When we finish item 20, we will then re-begin going through our general public comment cards. At this time, those of you that have, are not, that have no bench business where it relates to item 20, you have to leave. We have to clear the council chambers. So sergeants, so that we can go into closed session, on item 20, please have everybody removed from the council chambers. And when we come back, when we finish with this item, we will complete our general public comment. When you, when we come back from this item, we will then return to general public comment. Yes, they will, sir. Yes, they will open. The doors shall open. You're welcome, sir. Okay, if you are not staff or attorneys or what have you, if you could please exit, exit the council chambers.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents and we have to know good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You'll be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as curl beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by their parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that the idea is stable, stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes One Cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play.
And a safe haven like Hollenbeck Palace.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here, to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to Onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
585 IAF 5060 watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and when we, uh, have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You'll be taken to a station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Thrill Week.
The guardian is not just someone appointed by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
The people, you are nobody and you were elected to help us, but instead you elected yourselves amongst each other to collect money and to have a better life, to go to Germany, to the Berlin Wall, right, Mr. LeBonge? Next trip, we're going to see the Berlin Wall. Bullshit. The people need a lot of services and you're not providing it. Go to hell.
John Walsh. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org and now twittering at Hollywood Dems, capital H and two D's in that. Anybody but Wendy Gruel for Congress? Next congressman will be Lou. First of all, you came out from executive session. City Attorney has not announced what action was taken or whether no action was taken. If you voted for an appeal in there under the Brown Act, you must report it now, right? And we'll file a complaint. And we win always in court. And now today is a very special day. It's election day, folks. You get, people are getting to vote for their mayor. Oh, how I envy those people in San Diego. They're gonna get a new mayor today, but tomorrow we'll be stuck with the same old mayor that we have for another three and a half years. The Twitter account, again, I'm getting lots and lots of Twitter's tweets, and that is at Hollywood Dems, H-O-O, H-O-L, Hollywood, and then Dems, double D. And I want you to realize that you're doing a terrible job here. You violated the Brown Act because you, it is not, Mr. City Attorney, you show me on the agenda, general public comment. You hold three of them at one time, you make a sit around for an hour, this is discouraging public comment. Either it's gonna be at the end and the beginning, or, beginning or the end. It's not gonna be halfway through and after you do your, go in the back room and Mike Fuer and you, remember what's happening now. We will win any appeal that you want. We will, you will not build those skyscrapers in Hollywood, you will not destroy Hollywood, and we are going to win. We whipped your ass before, we're whipping your ass now, and we'll whip your ass in the future. HollywoodHighlands.org. A-S-S. Daniel Gus. Daniel Gus. Daniel Gus. Madam Clerk, note the file. Jeffrey Allen Solomon.
Well, what I really appreciate is when the actual council people sit at their seats to hear this, but Mike Bonin laughed and I was hoping he could be here because part of this is about him. Honoring my mother, Esther Solomon, I'm wearing this shirt. I started the Revlon Run Walk for breast cancer. And my father's name is Abraham Solomon, and he also died of cancer. So that's just to honor it. But the reason I'm here is that I have been, I am now the ambassador for the LA Rail, excuse me, Rail LA and the Jewish Federation to bring the world, what do we call this thing here, World's Fair, the Los Angeles, and Mike Bonin and I, or excuse me, Mike Bonin and I will be supporting him because not only will he be doing this, he will be President of the United States, and you don't know that yet, but I'm creating that to happen. I'm not on this planet to do anything but bring about world peace. And I've been here only 70 years, we score in 10, but this is, this is my 21st time I've been here, and each time I've been killed by people that hated me just because I happened to be Jewish. And I'm not leaving this time. However, I am melting the polar ice caps right now, bringing the water up. The weather's changing everywhere, but I don't get some, accept some help from the City of Angels, Ciudad de los Angeles, and that was named a long time ago. I have AITs which are called Angels in Training, and they're working with me. I am from Venus or Venice Beach, that's where I live. I've been there 40 years. And I've been on the Venice Chamber of, Board of Directors of the Venice Chamber of Commerce for 20 years. I work with almost 100 501(c)(3).
Mr. Herman, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
God bless the Revlon Walk Run and your, your parents.
Angelinos, I bring this banana to you in response to what the bailiff, Mr. Duarte, said to me. You as an advocate have no right to interrupt or intervene when assisting a fallow Angelino. And yes, and I'm talking about the gentleman, Mr. Antonio, under Mr. Duarte, for your information, where'd you go? Mr. Duarte, right, you're not here. It's treason what you've done, there you are, it's treason. Don't say to an advocate like myself, who's trying to help the public, I'm reaching out to the public, when there is the ignorance of building a safety, taking action at the address at 1905 East L Street, lean for $4,148.64, and I'm not gonna get into that subject because as we heard today in our African-American civil rights and best interests we've done, let me tell you this, yes, Frederick Douglass, Rosa Parks, did things for civil rights, as I do today, as an advocate for not Angelinos, but for the population of people in Los Angeles because we generate what we want you to hear. And you hear it because you run behind your closed session doors and interrupt us when we speak. So you are nothing more but progressivism here. Have you had any right mind, even if the city attorney had any idea what I'm talking about, the progress of what he can say and do would benefit us all, but as a city attorney, you got nothing more but those shady glasses and a place to sit there and smirk at me. But I'm right, all the constituents that were here know for a fact that tolerance to Americans, to those with the history of what California's about, we are not gonna allow this system to, by alley housing department, to interrupt.
Richard Eastman, Richard Eastman. Richard Eastman. No, Madam Clerk, please file this, there's no other cards for public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for postinary referral.
So ordered, next item.
That takes council to announcements or adjourned motions?
Any announcements, members? No announcements at all, rise for adjourned motions. Our audience, please rise. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonge. Colleagues, I'd like to rise today and ask that we adjourn in memory of a friend of mine, a former editor of mine at the Wave Newspapers, and one of the last of the old time newsmen, Michael Seiler. Oh, and I should acknowledge that his friends Henry Mendoza and his friend and his ex-wife Celeste Durant are here today for this. Michael Seiler was a former feature writer and a general assignment reporter for the LA Times. He died a short time ago, a week or two ago, from liver failure in Mesa, Arizona, where he was living. He was 65 years old, he left us too young. During his 14 years at the Times, Mike covered an impressive range of stories from national tragedies such as the Space Shuttle Columbia's explosion, which was the lead, page one story in the Times that he was so proud of, as well as small features about everyday life such as daily life in the city of Los Angeles's traffic court. He was a gifted writer and an editor, and an editor who could turn even the most mundane stories into fascinating slices of life. "He was a real old time newsman who just loved the newspaper business," said John Kissel, who worked with Mike at the Times. "He never wanted to leave the office." I should also say, he had a BS detector like nobody else I have ever met in my life. And he was not reluctant to express when there was something that he wanted to call BS on. Mike was born in Ossining, New York, on March 15th of 1948 to Sanford and Clara Seiler. His father was a prison guard at Sing Sing and his mother was a clerical worker. The family later moved to Tucson where Mike graduated from Tucson High School and received a full scholarship to Northwestern's Medill School of Journalism. He graduated college in three years and began his journalism career at Memphis Commercial Appeal in Memphis, Tennessee. From there, he went to the Dayton Journal-Herald in Dayton, Ohio. His friend Paul Turk, a longtime friend who worked with him there, said, "From the very beginning, he was cocky about his abilities." He would come back from an assignment and inform the city editor loudly, "This is a front-page story and I need 20 inches." Then he'd sit down and the story would appear seamlessly out of his typewriter. It could be humbling to watch and then read. Having worked with him, I can attest to that. He was a gifted writer and an even better editor. Mike joined the Times in 74, he was a pioneer of sorts. He was the first male reporter hired to write for the old LA Times View section, which was then considered mainly a women's page. He later transferred to Metro where he worked as a general assignment reporter. After leaving the Times in 87, he worked as a writer and an editor for a number of Southern California newspapers, including the San Gabriel Valley Business Journal where he was the managing editor, the Wave Newspapers where I worked with him, the Riverside Press Enterprise, and the Antelope Valley Journal where he was the editor. He also taught journalism at the Amundson School for Communication at Cal Poly Pomona. He's survived by his children, Colin Seiler of Portland, Oregon, who works in the television news business, a fact Mike was very proud of, his daughter Jessie Seiler of Bennington, Vermont, whose blog posts while she was in the Peace Corps he used to share with me with great joy, his sister Barbara Griffin of Mesa, Arizona, three nieces and a nephew, his second son Sanford predeceased him. I should say this about Mike, the two memories I have most of him is when I was newly sober and was discovering the St. Francis Prayer. There's a phrase in it about when, "When there is error, may I seek truth." Mike made that his motto, he posted it above his copy editor's desk, and he made it his mission to make sure that our role at the newspaper every day was to seek truth. The other thing I gotta say is he saved me from a life of